The September 20th, 2021, seven o'clock session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCoy, to please call the room.
Mr. Beszczich?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and I call on this president. I am delighted tonight to have my friend, who will be delivering our invocation, Reverend Gary Holland, pastor of Trinity Missionary Baptist Church. Reverend Holland, thank you for coming out, and following your invocation, I will lead everybody in a pledge of allegiance to the flag. So will you please stand?
Thank you for having me here. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, how excellent is thy name in all the earth! The heavens declare thy glory, and the firmament show forth thy handiwork. We're so grateful for you blessing us with this great city we call Roanoke, and we're so thankful for your presence here in this city council meeting. Father God, we ask that you would take control of this meeting, orchestrate all that is done, show your strong hand on the behalf of this city. Bless the mayor, bless the vice mayor, bless all the council, bless the clerk, bless all that are here doing your service. Give them wisdom, give them knowledge, give them understanding. Guide them, order their steps, and let everything they do be a blessing to the city and glorify you. Now increase our city, continue to watch over it, and continue to bless it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated. Thank you, Pastor Holland. Welcome, everybody, to our second session today of Roanoke City Council. The first order of business is I will call on one of my colleagues to bring us out a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move with respect to any closed meeting, just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his and her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Second.
Did you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please call the room.
Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor was not in attendance.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. All right. Tonight's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, September 25th at 4:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. All right, we're down to item A on our agenda tonight, which is the public hearing. And our first public hearing is a request of Brightview LLC to rezone property located at 1345 Plantation Road Northeast from I-1 Light Industrial District to INPUD, which is really Institutional Plan Unit Development District, to be used as an outpatient mental health substance abuse clinic. And Mr. John Poubak is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to rezone certain properties located at 1345 Plantation Road Northeast from I-1 Light Industrial District to INPUD Institutional Plan Unit Development District, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance.
Thank you. I must note that the City Planning Commission approved on a 6-0 vote this measure. And at this time, I'm going to recognize Mr. Lefrich on behalf of the petitioner for any comments. Is Mr. Lefrich here?
I'm here, but I think the applicant is here, too. We've got Mr. Poubak.
It's Poubak, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, John Poubak, happy to be here tonight. I'll make this brief. Again, we do have the support of the Planning Commission's by 6-0 vote. I also wanted to note that we also have the support of the Roanoke Valley Collective Response and Carillion Clinic. I'll give the clerk.
Just copied those letters. Just for your record there.
Thank you.
We're excited to be here. On behalf of Brightview, Brightview is a multi-state operator. This is really step one, going through the rezoning process, limiting it to that, but we want to be transparent about where we're headed here. We're headed for an outpatient mental health and substance abuse clinic. That's what Brightview operates. This rezoning is really a fundamental step to get there. We have a special exception filed before the Board of Zoning Appeals, so if council has favorable action, we'll be proceeding to that next step, and you continue to work through the process and get open to serve the residents of Roanoke. This is a really ideal site, and I'm going to introduce Mike DiMaggio, Vice President of Development for Brightview, to explain why this site's so ideal, but there are statutory limitations on where these sites can be. They have to be at least a half mile from daycares and schools. So Brightview looks at the population they intend to serve, and there's a need for it in Roanoke. This is Brightview's first location in our area, and Roanoke was picked as that location as they continue to expand through southwest Virginia. So again, we're excited about the sport. We're excited about working with Brightview. We think it's a great venture, and I just want to turn it over to Mr. DiMaggio to sort of explain to you the services that Brightview will be providing, because we really want to be transparent and make sure you understand exactly where we're headed down the road, since this is the last time council will have to act in this application.
Okay.
We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. My name is Mike DiMaggio. I'm the Vice President of Development for Brightview. Brightview operates outpatient addiction treatment facilities. We have 44 locations across four states, and we have a very comprehensive approach to treating addiction. We offer our patients medical, clinical, and social services. A typical patient comes and spends about an hour or two at our locations. They see a doctor, they see a master's level counselor, and if they need to have any social services, they also see a case manager for those services, typically receive medication, and then go about their day, go back to their jobs, or go back to their home, anything of that sorts. We treat all forms of substance use disorder, and we take all forms of insurance as well, including self-pay if the patients do not have insurance. So we try and knock down as many barriers to treatment as we can, and with that, we try and locate our locations as close to these patients. Our patients typically have transportation issues getting to these clinics, so we try and locate our clinics as close as we can to their homes. And this is, as John had mentioned, this is somewhat difficult in the state of Virginia because of the half-mile restriction to schools or daycares. But we have some really exciting results from the patients that attend our achievements. I want to share a few stats with you guys from our white paper that we published on a 12,000 patient study that we did with our own patients. We have a third decrease in emergency room visits from three months at Brightview, a 50% decrease after a year at Brightview. Patients' illicit substance use decreases by 70% within the first 90 days of treatment at Brightview, and within six months, the unemployment rate of these patients decreases by 50% at Brightview. So not only are these patients going to the emergency department less, using illicit drugs less, but they are also getting jobs, getting their lives back, and becoming productive members of the community again. And like John had mentioned, we spoke with a lot of key stakeholders in the community and received a lot of support for our services, notably Carillion Clinic and the Roanoke Valley Collective Response Team. I'm happy to answer any other questions or any specific questions that you guys have.
Well, I want you and Poubak to just be ready to answer some questions. We'll get there. I just want to go through this process first, and we'll come back, and if any of the council has any questions of yours, please be ready to respond.
Sure, yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing now, and do we have any citizens wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, with no citizens wishing to speak on this matter, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I will ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments, and I'll start with Mr. Beszczich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to ask Mr. DiMaggio, if I could, if you could come back up to the podium, please. Does Brightview provide any residential services?
No, sir.
Not on any of your facilities in any of the four states?
No, sir.
Do you have other facilities already in another place in Virginia?
We do, sir, in Chesapeake, Virginia.
All the way with Chesapeake.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Where?
In Chesapeake, Virginia.
Chesapeake?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I know we need more treatment facilities, and I also know that we need more redevelopment of properties on Plantation Road. So I appreciate that you're making this available to more folks in our area, and especially that you're doing it in a location that really will, can benefit from redevelopment. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one question. Yeah, could you just tell me, I'm trying to look at a picture here on my phone, could you tell me how far you are from that elementary school there?
We should, so we have a restriction, a half-mile restriction between any school or daycare. So I believe we are about .6 miles from that elementary school, if I recall correctly.
Okay, it just seems really close. You could still, you could see the school parking lot. That's the only concern that I have. Monterey.
Was that it, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
All right, let's go.
I didn't think it was that close, because this, the property is right near Orange Avenue.
Correct.
I mean, it's literally, you turn left off Orange on Plantation, and it's just around the corner. So I'm thinking it's a different property.
1345 Plantation Road, right, 1345?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a, it's a mixed-use area over there. So there's an office, series of offices on the left that are five or six mental health, well, it's, they're different health organizations. Foot Levellers is right behind it on the left, and then over on the right is a big warehouse, couple of big warehouses.
That's the disadvantage of these black and white photos, I Googled the address, and that's what I got.
I saw the building that's there currently, and it, are you going to remodel that building and add an extension out, or are you going to replace the building? I didn't quite understand.
No, sir, so we have no plans to modify the exterior of the building. All of our modifications will take place on the interior of the building. We will be expanding the parking lot slightly to accommodate more spaces for our staff and patients, but everything else will be inside the building.
Okay, I'm looking at, and I apologize, but I'm looking at the exterior which shows, and maybe I didn't see the right building, maybe I'm not at the right address.
I would like to see. I wish we had a little visual or something, because I'm struggling with my phone.
Because the building I saw did not have an awning or like a carport that you could drive through, and this building does.
The building that, 1345 Plantation Road does not have a carport or any sorts.
Okay.
So I'm not exactly sure what building you're looking at in front of you, but the 1345 Plantation Road property that we are planning to renovate does not have a carport or any of the sorts.
Okay, well, these are, these are pictures in the document that you provided.
I believe, I believe I know what you're looking at, sir. Those are examples of locations that we've renovated in the past, just to show what a typical Brightview clinic looks like.
Okay, thank you.
We were trying to show that, you know, we provide high-quality medical facilities for our patients, so I apologize if that wasn't clear in the application.
Well, my apologies, I just, I appreciate the clarity. So you don't have any residential plans. Do you have, what are your growth plans, you know, pending how this goes? Do you anticipate looking for an additional site, or additional sites in Roanoke, or?
So we are looking throughout Virginia. Right now, we've identified Virginia as a state that needs additional treatment centers, and similar to our selection process in Virginia, or in Roanoke, we will determine where those areas of need are, and we'll try to open a Brightview clinic there.
Okay. And you said this is a day treatment?
Correct, yes, there's no overnight stay or anything of the sorts. Patients typically spend one to two hours in our facilities.
All right. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just say that you are right up the street from a new Department of Corrections Adult Probation and Parole Office, which serves Roanoke, Roanoke County, and Salem. They probably have about 2,000 men and women on probation, adult probation, or parole supervision there that are looking for day treatment of people that they have. You may be, may be already aware of it. It's in the 3,300 block of Plantation. They haven't been there that long, they just moved there a few months ago. So possible opportunity for you, especially in terms of referral, big opportunity, because I know a lot of people have issues there, so get a chance, just drop down there.
Sure.
And they'll talk with you.
We appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Any other? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Since he was going down the line, I didn't want to jump in.
Oh, no, you go ahead, I might have a question.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned that you looked at some additional, you're looking at some additional centers here, let me take this off. Have you looked at any in the Roanoke-Allegany region at all, such as Covington?
I have not. It is very difficult for us, as I mentioned, to find locations that are compliant with the regulations put on addiction treatment centers. We do have to be, obviously, there's specific zoning requirements, so then we have to be with more than a half mile away from a school or daycare.
I noticed that you mentioned that they have mail from the school or the daycare, but you're within a five-tenths of a mile to the ABC store, and I noticed one of the property owners who came and spoke in opposition, Mr. Brady. He owns Brady's Distillery, and he was concerned about placing this substance abuse clinic next to his distillery, but you were only focused on the school and daycare, but not the other surrounding businesses. I also, I have a question. Did you also speak with, you spoke with Carillion, but did you speak with Blue Ridge Behavior?
We have not yet on, not yet spoken with Blue Ridge. We plan to reach out more fulcantly to all stakeholders in addiction, hopefully, if we have a successful result here.
Okay, the reason why I brought that up is because Blue Ridge Behavior has a couple of clinics, outpatient clinics. One is, 1.5 miles is on McDowell, which is the Borough Center, and they treat exactly what you're saying you offer, as well as the one on Holland's, which is up from you, which is within a mile, and they offer the same services, as well as one we don't like to talk about, which is the Comprehensive Treatment Center on Herschberger, and that's within three miles. So we are offering this similar services that you are bringing in this area, which is actually, it is an industrial area. I believe it used to be under the Kimball redevelopment back in the 60s and 70s, and was set up to be redeveloped for industrial centers and to become a campus, which it never came to be. And now we're looking at the Wimson Road area, and I noticed you were saying it's a needed, well, your conclusions and recommendations from the city is a needed community resource, yet we have those needed resources right in that location. And to suggest this particular establishment will serve the residents of Wimson Road, because it's the Wimson Plan, and I should address that to the staff instead, but I think your facility is open to whosoever will let them come to the area. So I just have some issues with that.
May I respond to a few of those issues, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Sure. So on the Brady distilling access, I will note that less than 5% of our patients have alcohol use disorder, so it is a small subset of our patient base that actually struggles with alcohol problems. And then on the other facilities nearby, I can't speak to exactly what their treatment model is, but I would imagine that we offer a more comprehensive set of services than those providers, and we offer slightly different services. So patients that are pregnant or patients that have certain types of insurance that cannot attend those facilities nearby can attend to Brightview. So there is a slight difference between those providers that are nearby and what we offer.
Right, there are some that, when I Googled for Roanoke, they offer, there are some treatment centers that offer exactly what you're saying. In fact, the one on the Herschberger Road offers it for pregnant women and treatments for women, so we do still have that. And we're offering what you will be bringing in, as well as what is already here from the outside, from Rocky Mount or from Covington, and when they transit in, most of them become homeless, and they end up staying here, and whereby if they had those facilities, your facility there, they would have more of a support, family support, whereby they don't, and that in turn, the city has to offer additional services to additional transit people where we have that problem with the homeless, with the mental health in that area. So I just wanted to just bring that out.
75% of our patients do come within a 15-minute drive time of our location, so most of who we treat is hyper-localized to the community that we offer those treatment services in. And we do have that stat that I shared, that, you know, a 50% decrease in unemployment, so we would hope that that transient population that does attend our clinic ends up getting a job and being a productive member in the community.
But those that would be coming in from Covington, Rocky Mount, surrounding areas will just be migrating into our area and going to your clinic, so, and they will be staying at those facilities surrounding Orange Avenue, such as the Daisy and DeConno Travel, or over there in that area. That's my concern.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. I will at this time then close, did I close the public hearing? I closed the public hearing, then. All right, I'll call, if everybody has any other questions, Madam Clerk, you can call the room.
All right. Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
No.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
No.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And so the ordinance passes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, item number two is a request of CFT, NV Developments LLC to rezone a portion of property located at 4807 Valley View Boulevard Northwest from CLS Commercial Large Site District to Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District, subject to the development plan that specifies the location of the building, infrastructure, site access, and building design. Tom Root is the agent and is the spokesperson. Before we get to you, there's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
All right, it's been moved, and second, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to rezone a portion of certain property located at 4807 Valley View Boulevard Northwest from CLS Commercial Large Site District to MXPUD, Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. As noted, that the City Planning Commission again approved this matter on a 6-0 vote, and I will recognize Mr. Ray Flake on behalf of the petitioner. You're welcome to comment, you're welcome to, you can choose to make comments. If not, you can just reserve any comments until, determine if there's any questions for members of council. It's your choice.
I'd just like to say thank you for letting me be here, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here on behalf of this?
No speakers.
Okay. No citizens wishing to be heard, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'll ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments, questions. Sign off. I'll ask the clerk, then to call the room.
Mr. Mayor.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, you're moving kind of fast, I was trying to formulate it. I think Mr. Cobb might have one, but I was going to ask a question about the location of it.
That was my question.
Oh, I'm moving there, you all got to.
I understand, but I, but you have.
You gotta let me know.
And I probably should have reached out to Mr. Cobb earlier, but because I just couldn't figure it out on this black and white picture. I wish we had something better we could look at, but anyway.
Ms. White Boyd, I think it's right up there next to Chick-fil-A.
Right, next to Chick-fil-A?
Mm-hmm. Isn't it going right next to Chick-fil-A?
It's right behind the Chick-fil-A. It's actually in the parking lot of the Walmart Supercenter there. It's between the Chick-fil-A and the gas station pumps.
Okay, so in that area there?
Yes, ma'am.
What, do you know what it might be, or what are you thinking it might be?
It's going to be a Panda Express, 2,500-square-foot restaurant with drive-through.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that was helpful, because I have no clue. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? All right, Madam Clerk, ready to call the room?
Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number three, received citizens' comments with regard to the proposed 2020, 2021 HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Report from Robert S. Cowell Jr., City Manager. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution approving the 2020 through 2021 HUD Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report Regarding the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizing the city manager to submit the caper to HUD.
All right. I'm going to recognize the city manager for any comments that he'd like to have.
The only thing I'll do is explain this a little bit. And if you have any specific questions, Keith is here and can answer those as well. But essentially, at this stage, what this amounts to is, if you will, sort of our report card. How did we do with the programs? Interestingly, if you look at some of them, you can really see the impact of COVID and the fact that we were doing some things. You start to see things like 12,000% numbers of what we had anticipated serving in some of these areas. So, but that is really what this is for. We're required by HUD to, in effect, make this available for public review for 30 days. And then, should we receive any comments, those are packaged up with this information and then forwarded on to HUD to meet our obligations. And again, if you have any specific questions about any of these items, Keith is here certainly to answer those as well.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing now. And Madam Clerk, are there any people signed up to speak on this?
No speakers signed up to speak.
All right. Therefore, we'll move forward and close the public hearing. And I'll ask my colleague if they have any comments or questions. Mr. Cobb.
Keith, would you mind coming up for just a sec? There's a lot to digest here. And just kind of building on what Mr. Cowell said, could you highlight for us a couple of areas where you saw maybe shift in service provisions? And I'll give you an example. In the section on homeless services, you know, our strategic plan was to provide tenant-based rental assistance and rapid rehousing and overnight shelter. And it appears on this one chart that none of that was actualized. And I'm wondering if some of that was shifted to more homeless prevention?
The majority of the funds that we, for ESG, we typically receive about $153,000 a year. In March of 2020, we were notified we were receiving about 1.6 million in ESG funds. The majority of the funds that were received through the CARES Act were put for direct housing for the homeless in area hotels.
Right.
We had about 859,000, I think of that, went through Arch for the, for short-term housing for those that were homeless. So, a lot of the sheltering that we, a lot of the short-term sheltering that we usually do, we were, we had to shift our focus for the response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
So, and maybe I'm just having a problem reading these charts.
This report is not very user-friendly.
Okay.
I would like to come back to council with a little more clearer picture of what we do. I do have some statistics here in front of me that I can answer, but a lot of these, a lot of these forms are required by HUD that...
So, putting the form aside, can you just give us some of the highlights of what you were able to do with this funding and essentially what you've reported here, but outside of the non-user-friendly mode?
Yes, sir. All right. We received 1.6 million, over 1.6 million in CDPG funds for the year and 675,000 in home investment partnership funding. Most of that went for housing development. Majority of that, I think 1.7 total went into, or 1.6, excuse me, went to the Melrose Orange Target area. This was our, supposed to have been our final year in the Melrose Orange Target area. However, the Streetscape project that is currently underway, that was supposed to happen last year but was delayed, is keeping us there for another year. So, we're wrapping up there while we're still shifting our full focus for this year's indomitable funding in Belmont-Fowlon Target area. But we were able to do six new homeownership, new homeownership housing through Habitat, all that in, and 52 units in housing rehabilitation, including five with disabilities for those to remain in housing. Public facilities, we assisted 3,835 persons estimated through the Kiwanis Access Playground. They're also in Moda. Code enforcement, we issued 917 citations, of which 698 were corrected by the homeowner. Of the new homeownership and the housing rehab were all done in the Melrose Orange Target area. We were not able to get, even though it was a bridge year, all of our funding went into Moda. And we were not able to get anything really started in Belmont-Fowlon yet. There were 42 persons assisted under public services through the Children Trust Addiction Center through our CD program, which was the Corona Fire Response. We have 50 persons assisted through the Brain Injury Services of Southwest Virginia for free community-based management of services individuals with brain disorders. Housing stabilization for families in need through the Council of Community Services for those facing homelessness. We were able to assist 93 persons. The food insecurity among vulnerable households, we had two community partners through LEAP and KidSore. We were able to assist 3,699 persons. And Commonwealth Catholic Charities provided employment services to eight refugees, or excuse me, to eligible refugees affected by COVID-19. We were able to serve 57 persons through that. And we started a CD small business grant program in partnership with Freedom First Credit Union. We were able to do two as of last year, but we have many more in the pipeline for this year. So, that is a continuing project that spanned beyond just June 30th.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Holland, is, do you have to post this particular report? Is that what has to be posted on the website? This is the form that it has to be posted in?
It is. We, I would like to next year or begin developing a more, in the annual plan that I present to you, I do an executive summary that is much more user-friendly than the actual required annual plan that's submitted. And staff have talked about trying to develop, we're working with a consultant now to try to develop a similar executive summary for our comprehensive annual performance evaluation report. That would be easier to read.
Okay. This is your report, then? It's not something HUD?
That is what HUD, we're using the HUD database. We fill the numbers into the HUD database, and that's what goes to HUD.
Okay. Yeah, I know it's required to...
So, the executive summary that Keith is talking about would accompany this.
What accompany this?
This still has to be done, but then, yeah, that will be helpful, because you know, like they said, if you want to keep secrets from teenagers, you write it in cursive, and this is pretty much...
It is difficult for the layman.
Yeah, write it in HUD.
Yeah. I mean, because I couldn't understand it. And I wanted to ask the question publicly here so that, you know, other people could hear, because, you know, we got viewers. Our residents are watching us. And I don't know how anybody could have understood that. So, I appreciate you taking the time to go through that for us. And I'm glad to hear that next year it will be a little bit more user-friendly.
We're trying to address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask a question, Holland.
Yes, sir.
I see, now, because Roanoke is business-friendly, I heard a lot of developers ask me about incentives to developer come in and develop new housing. Are you, you're the person that they need to contact or to see what incentive is?
Our housing has to go for low to moderate income individuals. So, they have to meet income eligibility to use our HUD funds. There are other incentives. I know the city has a historic tax incentive for a lot of the properties in the historic districts. There are other incentives besides ours. Our funds, let me go back to, our funds cannot go directly to a home buyer or a home developer. We, our funds are routed through nonprofits, such as Habitat for Humanity, Renovation Alliance, and TAPP, who actually go in and do the renovation. We do have money set aside in this year's plan for a down payment assistance program targeted to the Belmont-Fowlon Target area that will go directly to the home, new home buyers, qualifying new home buyers.
Okay. Thank you.
But typical developments, we're really not the source for that.
Okay.
And right now, can I?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to ask. So, right now, Ms. Holland, we only have about four, right, that are really participating in those particular grants, nonprofits that are eligible for those grants that have been applying. Based on your report, it looked like Restoration Alliance, Restoration Housing, Habitat for Humanity, and TAPP. Those are the only four that I have.
We're working also with Reach this year.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Reach. Okay. Yeah, it seems like it's pretty limited. Unfortunately, we don't have some others out there who are...
Who's doing business in Roanoke right now.
Right. And who are nonprofits. That's, you know, that's part of the criteria, I guess. But thank you for responding.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question from members of council? All right. Madam Clerk, are you ready to call over?
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Resolution passes. All right. I don't know. Four is, hearing them four is, Proposal of the City of Roanoke to Consider, the sale of property located at Old Norfolk Avenue Southwest to TLC Properties, local owner of Lamar Advertising, Robert S. Cowell Jr., City Manager. And this matter has been withdrawn. Is that...
Let's go ahead.
All right. Are there any comments you'd like to make regarding that?
No. It needed to be still included in your agenda because it had been advertised, but it was withdrawn, therefore, no actions necessary.
All right. All right. Item number B1 is an execution of Amendment Number Four to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate Between the City of Roanoke and Rutherford Partners LLC in connection with a new transportation facility. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Four to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke, Virginia and Rutherford Partners LLC dated September 17, 2019 to provide for, one, the sale and transfer of Campbell Court as described below from the city to developer, and, two, the acquisition of the future rail station parcels as described below by the city from developer, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or comments or questions by members of council?
Mayor, the only thing I'll just clarify for anyone that's wondering what we're doing, since this is the fourth and hopefully final amendment of this, we are simply changing the end date of performance. So, basically, this is requiring closing to occur by January 31st. That is, that is the extent of what this, otherwise, the terms remain the same as has been previously the case. And subsequent to this, you'll have the GRTC component associated with this. And actually, tomorrow is the pre-construction meeting for the work on the Brandon lot. So, work is, work is beginning officially on the transit facility.
Okay. Thank you. This has been something of great concern to those of you that just came through an election. There was a major, major point of contention in terms of who, what, and when. Thank you, Ms. Cowell. Any other comments or questions by members of council? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call over?
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the ordinance passes.
All right. Item number two, B2, is the execution of an Amendment Number Four to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke and Greater Roanoke Transit Company in connection with a new transportation facility. There is an ordinance.
Move your ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Four to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke, Virginia and Greater Roanoke Transit Company dated September 17, 2019 to provide for, one, the sale and transfer of the GRTC relocation parcels as described below to Greater Roanoke Transit Company from the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and, two, the acquisition of Campbell Court as described below by the city from GRTC, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Any question? All right. Madam Clerk, please call over.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Well, I didn't even see it. The hearing of citizens upon public matters, city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council. Do we have anyone here to speak?
No citizens to speak.
All right. Well, I can appreciate the brevity of this because a few months ago, it was almost page and a half. Had to go through this. I hope we can continue to stay in front of COVID. All right. Thank you all. There being no further business to come before the council. The council meeting is hereby adjourned.